To everybody is, I'm just going to do a quick round around house. So my name's Dave Barnard. I'm Strategic Manager in Community Connections and tomorrow I'll be on as the Tactical Commander. Just working down through the list. So Paul, I'll come to you next please. Just a quick introduction.
Paul Barnard, Service Director for Strategic Planning Infrastructure.
And Paul, Nick.
You Nick.
Sorry, Nick Carter, Helen Hosingham Growth, Strategic Planning Infrastructure.
And James Drake.
Hi there, James Drake, Secretary Inspector for Plymouth South. So I'll be on site tomorrow as well with the policing team.
Fantastic, cheers James. Ellie? Or Eleanor?
I'm Eleanor Firth and I am the Head of Public and Partner Relations at Plymouth City Council. Probably makes sense for Jane to go next because Jane and I will be working together tomorrow on this.
Yeah, but that ruins my like list.
Sorry, very sorry. Which case, don't go to Jane next.
Jane.
Jane Slaven, Corporate Communications, working with Ellie.
Fantastic. Ray?
Ray House, I've been pulled in by the Chief Execs team to sort of pull everything into what we would do as an operational plan for any project or event we're doing.
Right, yeah, I read that over the weekend. Thank you. Martin?
I am Martin, I'm at City Centre Regeneration Coordinator in Nick's team and the, I guess the lead, a mile away from PCC side.
Brilliant. Julian?
Hi, yeah, good morning. Julian Satterington, I'm the on-call Civil Protection Officer this week from the Civil Protection Team.
Phil Jailer. Phil, you're on mute.
Phil Jailer, Project Manager for Curran Brown and we're here in the office on site a mile away. I've got James Bloomfield and David Chugley with me as well from Morgan Sindal.
Mark to be joining in a minute as well.
Brilliant. Shantel Welbourn.
Good morning, I'm one of the neighbourhood beat managers for the city centre and waterfront area and have been the MBM focusing on this.
Hi, Shantel. And then last but by no means least, from what I can see is Vanessa.
Good morning, Vanessa Woodruff, part of the Civil Protection Team. Dave is also trying to join from our team, but he's having some computer difficulties right now. So hopefully he'll get back on with us shortly.
Brilliant. Okay, that seems to be the trend of these meetings. Last week it was connectivity, I believe, and dropping in and out. So hopefully he'll be able to join us shortly. So just looking at the agenda that Julian's shared, item number two is declarations of any items of interest. Is there any declarations at this moment in time? No, moving on to item number three, items for urgent attention and decisions. Are there any urgent decisions being required at this precise moment in time to take over the agenda? No. Okay, so police. Phil, just so you're aware, you're not on, yeah, we go cracking. So going on to item number four. So all members and police, are there any current threats or security issues that we need to be made aware of at this time? Any intelligence over the weekend following the Herald articles? Anyone got anything to say, to say it's altered since last week?
From me, we've had nothing, we've had no intelligence to suggest any change so far.
Fantastic. So it happened around the site, anything that you've been made aware of, Martin or Phil?
Nothing.
Nothing from our side, nothing's changed. PCC side, I don't think anything has Morgan Sindal's side as well.
Okay, superb. So. I'm just going to drop into the chat because I've just seen Dave put something in there. Okay. Thanks Dave. So that is, that is some new information. I didn't realise it was that big. So 1,400 followers on the Straw Facebook page. Okay. Right, so item number five, there's no further information coming around intelligence or security risks at the moment. So a mile away specifics, confirm current position, confirm timelines. Hopefully you've all had a chance to see Ray's kind of pull together of the plans over the, over the period. I've got some observations, but firstly I think Martin or Paul or James, is there any hint from yourself just to talk through the plans at the moment? You have to talk to us about them, please.
But I don't, I mean, it all made sense to me. I think there's something internally between me and Phil Jailer deciding, who has to do which part? If some of these scenarios did come to fruition, I think there's a matter on timing and I don't know whether Paul might be best to talk about that. Paul, do you want to give a bit of background to that?
What, you mean in terms of the timing of the executive decision?
Yeah, because I think that that ultimately is a fundament, that hour is absolutely critical to this meeting, isn't it?
And so the last, the last conversation we had was, wouldn't it be best if the executive decision that's going to be signed by the leader would be simultaneous with the arrival on site, well, the completion of the erection of the fencing and, and the security being, the security for the site being deployed. It looks as though that's not going to be possible, largely due to the sort of the potential for challenge that we, it could be argued that we would have instigated the decision ahead of it being signed by the leader and the optics around there being no gap, literally no gap between the publication of the executive decision at seven with the effectively the mobilisation of the works that would start at eight for the removal of the trees. So it's likely that, notwithstanding, I think, the view of the police and certainly Morgan Sindal, that that won't be possible. So we're just having a debate with our democratic support team and monitoring officer about when is the latest we can publish that. And the sort of debate is currently swinging between five and six o'clock. So there is going to be the publication of an executive decision on our website with, with related documentation, probably an hour before the commencement of the erection of the further fencing and the mobilisation of the, of the security for the site.
Yeah, Paul, just picking up on that, I had the exact same conversation with Giles this morning and I kind of, I do understand his trepidation around or the risk factor around that. So I don't think we're going to get a review of that, but it does then bring into question the period from arrival on site to the, to the implementation of perimeter fencing going up. I see James has got his hand up. I'll come to James first and then I'll, I'll come back to my point.
Yes, just a quick question, Paul, just in regards to that, that publication. Am I right in assuming that that doesn't give any information as to when it's going to take place? Just that the agreement has been taken, it will take place.
No, no, the precise mobilisation is obviously a matter for us acting within that authority given by the executive decision. So there's no details about, we'll do this at six o'clock and this at seven and this at eight. That is for us to sort out, but it does create that gap, which now looks as though it's unavoidable. And clearly, as I understand it, clearly we can't section off a mile away at, at five or six o'clock because the shops are still open. And I don't know whether we can get the security to the site earlier. Morgan Sindal might want to comment on that in a second. But it looks as though we're going to have a gap and that we may not be able to avoid that gap. There's an inherent risk there to my mind and always has been. But if that is what we're advised by the monitoring officer and the, and the acting chief exec, then, then we'll just have to take that risk.
Because we're relying on that section, on section 68, aren't we, in terms of it being a CDM site? And therefore their removal from the site. But if we, if we can't get the compound up and running in time, that's, it's our weak point, isn't it? So I think we wanted to check with Morgan Sindal, we've not had that conversation as Paul said about security and whether we could get them in any, any earlier. But what, what, what would be security's powers? Basically, you know, I suppose you wouldn't be able to remove people from a site that's not closed off.
So to, so to answer that, I think there's another question here. Does it mean we can't start erecting or we can't close it off? Because can we not start erecting but leaving it clear ways through for the public? And therefore then close at the appropriate time where security then can assist, as I would imagine, they will shop levers and staff sweeping down from the site, helping them out the site. So is it a case we can't erect a single panel to that notice goes out? Or we can, but we can't close it off because we could start erecting earlier, but leaving clear way gates for people to still access shops and egress and then close them off. So that would, that would give it. But again, that goes on the premise of whether the fencing company can get in earlier, whether the security can get in earlier. And speaking of security, they got an extra 20 hands there. Once they're briefed, they'll do whatever is needed to help and assist on this, whether it's fencing or whatever. So just, I think there's a thought around that, Paul, whether we can start putting fencing up, but leaving clear ways that we're not blocking off from public domain and then close it, or whether we can't start erecting until that notice goes out.
Well, currently it's, we can't start erecting, that's the conversation. But there's a further conversation between Emma, the monitoring officer and Giles' Acting Chief Exec later on this morning. So as we speak today, it's, we're not starting anything until the executive decision is, is, I mean, I agree with you for the reason I hinted at earlier, but, but we're waiting on that decision from Giles and Emma. Well, it was ultimately Giles's decision, I think.
The only reason I flag it is we, because we've done this to the Ho before, like MTV, we fenced it but left it open as public and lab. But yeah, it'll be down to, to Emma to, to guide on that, as you say.
If I could, sorry, if, just on that one, and I think that's, it's a really good point, just from my point of view, just at the security side of things. If we are going to stop, I mean, if, if the decision is that we can put the fencing up earlier, if we do start to put fencing up and we find ourselves in a position where we've got it half done and we have to wait for something, then that, the mere fact of putting the fencing up is going to draw obviously a lot more attention, especially if we are doing it earlier. There will be people in the city centre who will see the fencing going up and they're more likely to see that than the announcement. And unless we are happy that we can completely secure it off straight away, we, we potentially are inviting people to come in and sort of, and make themselves, you know, sort of make their stand within.
I think that's right. I mean, the reality is that I think people are monitoring the website as soon as that gets, they, they get, they get, we've confirmed a democratic support. They get notifications if they ask for them. So as soon as it, believe it or not, there are people who are surfing our webpages. So I think you're right. I think the, it both had the potential to trigger a response. One, the publication of the report. Two, the actual erection of fencing to close off a mile away. Hence trying to align the two together, but therein lies the difficulty.
So just a question then. So we're talking about bringing it forward, but actually, I mean, is there a need to bring it forward? So if we can, if we can public, you know, make publication at 4.50 ultimately, 4.50, the plan, the plan then starts at five o'clock. We've, we've satisfied Giles, which is, which is the point that he's raising, we can't be acting on the site until such time as publication is made. I guess I want to go back to my, my first point, which is that, that time. So we've got five o'clock activity will start on site, in which case we'll have had to publicise maybe 4.50, 4.45.
Due to start at six, wasn't it, not five?
Yeah, but it's around that activity on the site where Giles is, is a little bit concerned around the activity on site. So, but, but when you look at it, between five and six, we've got team arriving, we've got a next team arriving, we've got a briefing. And then at six o'clock, we're going to start doing the work. So we've got an hour of activity on that site that, could we not have that offsite? Could we not have the briefing take place somewhere else? Could we not just to try and condense as limited time offsite briefings, et cetera, taking place? And then so when they land on site, they're briefed and they start working straight away and we have.
Morgan Sindal might want to comment on that because I think there was a discussion in that regard about briefings.
Morgan, I can't hear you very well.
Dave, that's too quiet. Sorry.
Right, I'll come and cuddle Phil, hang on. Sit next to his laptop. And yeah, the plan is all the inductions are being pre-done, so the briefing is just going to be literally a briefing. On the night, that will be done in our compound down here and I'll go up there. It's not up on the main site, it's actually down here where we're. So is that fine just being down here? Are you talking elsewhere in the city?
So you're saying that the briefing would be in the compound and we're, the question is, do we do it elsewhere, another location? So it doesn't bring that number of people under obvious surveillance into, into the compound. In my, my view, my view, I was thinking about it, it's such a minor issue, but I think we need to try and make it look like business as usual, as much as possible. So in terms of, you know, Morgan Sindal, what time are you usually offsite? And we're usually closing the, the, closing those windows on the compounds, the shutters and this, that and the other. And try and make it as minimal amount of activity as possible. But yeah, what would be your view, Dave, in terms of where the briefing should be?
I just, so all I, all I want to do is try and condense that time between loads of people arriving and then us doing some work on site. Because if we're, if we're going to publicise, then we want to start work quite quickly after that. And, and ultimately, if we're going to have a load of people landing on site, then, then really Giles, from what you said earlier, is potentially going to want that publication to have gone out. So if we can, yeah, we, I mean, we could brief at Ballard House or wherever it might be to take it away from there. But I don't, I'm not on that site. I'm just, I'm, I'm putting the options there. At the moment, as it stands, we've got an hour of kind of teams forming on the site, having a briefing. But from what Giles has said is, if that's the case, he's going to have wanted to have publicised in advance of that happening and therefore we've got an hour. But if, if we could make those actions happen offsite, so that Giles is happy with what's going on, then, then ultimately we've got teams landing and then delivering straight away. And I think it just reduces that time. So I mean, it's, it's open for conversation. If you, it's.
Sorry, Dave, with the fencing guys coming, we've got 18 guys, 18 guys coming to do the fencing, how many vehicles? You want me to? I can't hear you. You're too far ahead. So you've got six vehicles, six transit vans with trailers, the fencing. It's not somewhere you can hide. The vehicles need to be in Old Town Street, New George Street, and our compound up there to walk somewhere and get a briefing. And you can't sort of hide the vehicles, you need the guys here in the vehicles to do the briefing. Is that catch 22?
So that kind of ties in with what we're saying about suggestion about, about Guildhall. And I can speak with Alex and see, because I suppose you could use the Guildhall car park if we get it pre-arranged and park the vehicles up there and do the briefing in, in that building. So I don't know where you were planning to park the cars anyway.
I don't know what the size of the car park. Got kind of a lot of loaders. So yeah, the low loaders will have Glendale Street equipped. They leave, all the, all the fencing, you've got people to call.
It's too, it's, it's, Gav, it's too quiet. We can't hear anything. I don't know if it's just me, but can't, can't really hear anything.
We're going through Phil's laptop, that's all. It's what Gav's saying as well, it's all the fence panels on the transit and everything and the trailers. It's actually, that's the big thing as well. So it's going to be some big wagons.
Okay, so you're not just talking about, you're not just talking about the security guys arriving in their vehicles, you're, you're talking here about the, about the felling equipment.
Well, no, the felling equipment is not too bad, it's the fences. So the first briefing is the fences and the security guys turn up, have their briefing. They go out together, so the security guys are there. The A, help protect, so divert the, so we can put the fencing up. The tree felling guys don't come until after the area is secure. And they will have a great briefing with Gav.
Okay.
We've lost them again, haven't we?
Yeah, I'm not sure we're drawing, drawing a, a conclusion there. It's, it's so hard with you guys being in that office. This is the second meeting in a row where we're not able to hear what's being said. It's, it's just really, really awkward. Just can't, can't make decisions because we're getting 50% of what you're saying, is my view. Okay. Views then, I suppose I'm going to put it open. Do we, do we hold the briefings at the Guildhall? Does that bring us, bring us additional, additional kind of coverage for a short period of time?
I mean, in, in the absence of anybody else, Dave, I completely agree with yourself. If we can do everything that we don't need to do on site, away from the site, it doesn't draw attention to us. If, if that decision's been made, we publish it on the website, people are obviously going to be looking around. If we can get the briefing done somewhere else, and that makes total sense to me. I, I think, reading between the lines that they were talking about the, the amount of vehicles on the car park. But I've said, I don't know the size of the Guildhall car park, but it makes total sense to me.
Sorry to inter, interject here, but could, could we not look at, could the vehicles park on the Ho Promenade, which is sort of out the way? The contractors then go down to there or is that going to be a contentious issue as well? There's the Guildhall for the briefings, then they get their vehicles and they drive on site to start erecting.
They all go into the Guildhall, they go into the Guildhall car park beside the Guildhall as well.
I'm not sure with the amount of fencing you've got, they're going to get all those vehicles and the fence vehicles in the Guildhall car park and in the front. That's my only concern. The Guildhall will be the best place to hold all the briefings, as you say, then just move on site and look at, make it look as BAU on site. But it's those, if they've got to bring their vehicles with them, it's where, where they put them.
Okay, look, let's say, let's say we're going to end up spending the whole meeting looking at this in action. I think agreed as a group, brief offsite, that location would be the Guildhall. Julian, can I ask that you, you look at some form of parking solution? Are you able to do that? You've got your hand up, so that's why I've chosen you.
Yeah, my, my question, my question was actually, why not just go to Coi Pool? Because there's an awful lot of stuff out happening at Coi Pool, that's where the machinery is going. So there's a big space there to store it, to store the, for the briefings to be undertaken. And then they can just come in as and when they get the get-go.
Yeah.
You then, you know, you just, you just come them in, bring them in in order, marshal them in, say, right, fencing, go, security, go. You know, and just, and just put a timeline in that allows them to come in down in Bankman Road, one crew at a time, as they, as they need in order, rather than having the whole people sitting around. In the area, they're out of the city and they're away. And we know that we're using Coi Pool as a holding area. That's what we're off, is a holding and briefing area. And Coi Pool's fine, it's, it's well out of the way.
The thing with Coi Pool is it's, you've got restricted height, you've got restricted weight load. You know, so the actual tree cutting equipment, that's going to wait in a lay-by dinner on the A38. Because we've, we've been told today that we've got weight restrictions and we've got height restrictions, so that stays out of the way. Just, I've just literally come off a briefing where we've had the security, we've had the, the guys who were cutting the trees down and the fencing guys. Me personally, it'd be, I mean, if you want us to do the briefing in, in the Guildhall, to keep it away from site. Fair enough regarding parking, by the time we briefed everyone, we need them in the vehicles and we need to get them here as ASAP. So anything within a couple of miles away, it's, you've got, you've got more chance of something going massively wrong. You know, if you get caught up in traffic, et cetera, you know. And regarding letting, I don't know what we talked about regarding letting the council dropping the information on the website. But I just, with a meeting that I'd just been in there, I've said I'll liaise with the fences, security guard. Once the first skin of fencing's up, I'll then liaise with the tree surgeon, he's going to tell me exactly when his wheels are on the road. I'll then let yous know when he's 10 minutes away. And then ideally, if we drop that information on the website, then you're not going to have issues with getting all the kit in.
Because if we go. Okay, I'm just, I'm just going to, I'll stop it there, only because we've, that was discussed. I know you didn't make that part of the meeting, but there is a want to make sure there's no activity on site, no fencing gone up in advance of publication as, as it increases the chance of an appeal. So Giles has made that quite clear to both Paul and I, that we can't be putting perimeter fencing up without such, without a publication. That is getting checked and reviewed today, but it's likely not to change. So it will be publicised prior to the fencing going up.
If that, if that's the case, then we need to get everything as close to the site as we can.
So then does it come back to what Ray suggested about the, about the Ho, the Ho Promenade?
Yeah, fill the car park and drive back out if it could get temporarily closed.
I'm nervous about the Ho. I mean, couldn't pick a more high-profile place. So I would have thought that's the last place we'd want to stick something, to be honest.
Civic building getting in.
What about, yeah, true, what, where, where else we have these kinds of places?
Behind the civic, if we talk to Urban Splash or Park.
Yeah, that's what I just, that was exactly what we just suggested. So where you've got Martin with the civic building behind him, that car park behind that civic building, you can actually drive in and drive straight back out again. So if we, we could relatively control that mid-afternoon for access, where you get all the vans and all the vehicles driving in there, walk through the Guildhall, get briefed, they can walk through the steps at the back to the Civic Square area, back into the vans and they're virtually in the city centre already.
Okay. There is also Colin Campbell Car Park. There's a big, like divisive area at the, the rear of like Dunya and stuff that vehicles could be in for a significant amount of time. And not a lot of vehicles would be parked there at that time of day.
That is actually, that's probably the better one, Shantel, isn't it? Because it's straight up one of the streets into the city centre then.
It's suddenly a lot more visible now, now that we've demolished some buildings along there.
There is, there is an area though, if you, if you're aware of the Premier Shop at the bottom of New George Street. Behind that shop, the car park area there is actually quite isolated and by five o'clock in evening, it's starting to get dark as well. No one parks vehicles in there. Very rarely is there anyone there.
So you mean the, the area behind Colin Campbell House, Shantel?
Um, so I don't know what it's called, but as you go into Colin Campbell from New George Street, take a left and then basically take a left again, there used to be like a furniture shop there.
Yeah, that's it, but yeah, the area behind there, yeah, yeah.
Probably is that bend, it's quite tight.
Okay, and then, so if that, if that location was chosen, where would the briefing be held? In Guildhall?
So Guildhall for the briefing and we'll go out and just clean, look at the two entrances for Civic Square and for Colin Campbell Court and see basically what we can get planned to swing around.
Okay. So Jane, I missed what you said then, sorry.
It feels like we're just drawing attention to something big just about to happen if we sort of do this in phases.
I totally agree. I think we're totally over-complicating it.
So over-complicating it, go on then, Paul, what would you suggest? Retain original plans, deliver them on site?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, of course, the ideal answer is to do the briefing offsite, everyone agrees with that. But the question is, if there isn't a, a place that we can do that discreetly, it defeats the object of doing the offsite briefing. So, and given the likely conclusion that we can't do anything ahead of the publication of the executive decision, if that is the conclusion, then there is going to be a gap between that decision being published on the website and the commencement of the erection of fencing in that scenario, that the, as I keep saying, the most obvious thing to do is to secure the site ASAP with the security and do that on site, rather than raising, getting into all sorts of complex permutations about the Ho, Colin Campbell Court. You won't get the low loaders round that corner, it's too tight. So, you know, I just, that's my view of it. If, if, if the, you know, if we can't do it simultaneously, which looks like the likely conclusion, then, then I think what Morgan Sindal is saying is right, that, that we just have to do it on site. And there will be a gap. And, you know, I mean, clearly we can't, we can't erect the fencing until the executive decision is published. And there's going to be a gap, the gap might be 30 minutes, it might be an hour. But we need to, once we know when that publication is going to be, then, then there's a further conversation, Dave, I think, with Morgan Sindal in terms of what's the best scenario to minimise the, the potential for the site compound not to be made secure as soon as possible.
Okay, there is, it's the whole purpose of this meeting.
But I'm not an expert, obviously. I'm just saying, it seems to me that looking at other sites that are very high profile is going to defeat the object.
This, this is the whole purpose of this meeting is to make sure that when we, when we made a decision, we, we've got a good rationale for that decision. My view is that, is that we've considered briefing offsite. And you're right, it's throwing up more, more challenges than what it's probably going to achieve. And, and therefore, we've no, we've nothing coming out, which suggests that, you know, those vehicles can get in, park outside. Then, then we, then we retain the plan. But, but in terms of when I have that conversation with Giles or if any time we're challenged over that decision, what we can say is that we thought about multiple alternatives, alternatives, none of them bared any fruit and we, we actually stuck with the original plan. I think the next bit we've got to work on is that, that time between six and seven being as short as possible. Which I'm, I'm satisfied. Which I'm I'm satisfied with. So, I mean, for the time being, for this moment, I'm there's an action coming from this, which is to consider or speak to Giles to confirm what time the publication will be made and how how far in advance of that is he happy that we can then start work on that site? So is it ten minutes? Is it half an hour? He needs to let us know that, Joe. So I'll take that as an action for here for the moment. Briefing remains on site, vehicles return up on site and and we've 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 discussed it. Any objections to that?
No.
No, fantastic. Okay.
Just want to add to that as well is that's that plan that we, the original plan I've just gone through. All the directors of all the companies with it and everyone's kind of buttoned up on a lot of it. So we've already gone through that plan of parking vehicles up at the top, getting the briefing done in there. Because if you lose the element of surprise, you've got to act quickly. If you've got people on site, you get it done and you get it open, we crack on with it.
Is there is there thought that it will be quicker than the hour? Because it looks like people are arriving and then an hour later it will start. Is there a thought that it will be quicker or not?
As soon as that briefing's done, I want to get I want to get the briefing nailed in ten minutes max. We've gone through with all the directors now what what the command structure is going to be. How are we going to, how are we going to deal with it from a management point of view? It's just getting the lads in, give them the heads up. Get them and getting them in position that's literally as soon as the paperwork's done and the briefing's done, we want to get out there and get it done as soon as. Get the area secure, get the vehicles in and then we're laughing. If we overcomplicate it from there, it can go anywhere. But that's the basics.
Yeah. Okay. Um, just going back to agenda, we are way off agenda and I do apologize. I'm sure that everyone's got loads of things in their calendar, but just got to make sure we get it right. Ray, did you want to go through your plans?
Yes, so I've pulled together, I've had some feedback and making some amendments from the plans already from various individuals. I've actually put in there a decision making flowchart for onsite a team and then to a point where it becomes reputational risk or or the impact on the project risk where the TOC needs to be informed. So I'll forward that in there. I think from my important thing is on site. Who is your project manager going to be on site, linking with the head of security, linking with the contract, Morgan Sindal, their contract man? What that team is and who those team are, and they're making the decisions on issues on site and dealing with. And who from the project team is going to be the one who is feeding back at the appropriate times to the to the TOC, to the Tactical Operations Centre. So I think from on site, you need to discuss who is doing what role and have that team. And obviously, their focus is on making sure that's delivered and reported back in decision making. Not trying to teach anyone to suck eggs here again, is any actions taken, date, time, who made that decision, who was involved, what happened? Because you can bet your bottom dollar here, there'll be some sort of legal challenge to this afterwards. And lawyers are going to want to say, want statements on everything that's done. So just make sure you've got a notebook and a pen and just scribble everything down. I know security will be doing that. Because it'd be worth its go or take photos with camera phones of issues and and stuff and that. Just don't underestimate the the aftermath afterwards if it happens and they go, I'm trying to remember, just gather as much intel as possible. Obviously, we're working on the on the fact that this is a CDM site and obviously that belongs to Morgan Sindal. And we're operating as the client, client and and everything else we're doing here to system. But it is important, and I'm sure they will have it in hand, that those primitive sites have got CDM signage on because that only adds weight to our how we're operating and under what legislation we're operating, should it go to court again. So again, I don't mean to teach anyone to suck eggs, but all these things are important. And I think once the outside single skin's up, that will make life easier and securities easier until you get the second skin up. So that initial outside skin is the important thing. And then the secondary skin after that will be important. From a decision making process, I've sort of tweaked a few things. I have put, having spoken to Giles this morning, timings of when he would like to see updates. So really, he would like updates from someone every half hour for the first three hours and then they'll agree on further updates after that. So again, it's it's someone within that group who isn't going to be tied up operationally and dealing with issues that can give those updates. So it's just sorting it out, that and who that's going to be on site there. Going through, just to give you an update, I did a weather update. Couldn't be worse to you. It's clear blue skies tomorrow from three o'clock onwards. It's seven degrees, though it is dropping down to minus one overnight and through the night into early hours of the morning. So it is going to be extremely cold overnight. But unfortunately, it's clear blue skies with about five degrees from three o'clock onwards. Which isn't sort of great for the contractors doing the work, that it's not raining, but not great for us from a deterrent point of view on there as well. I've done a updated comms list. Thanks for, yeah, Ellie's details and that and put in there. And I know the civil protection team are working on sort of staffing and rotas for covering everything off there. From a policing point of view, when do you think we'll get a log number? You were talking about us having a log number if we have to call trouble nine or are we talking about no police presence, James? I don't, probably your comments earlier.
I did ask, so Brad, who's he's on later today, he's going to be the sergeant on scene with me. I did ask him to put a log on on the day, but I think in hindsight, I'll probably get that log put on today and I'll communicate that to you guys so that you you're aware.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it's just important for security to have that. And speaking of security again as well, they've got their mobile command unit on on site. So what they do, if they have to detain anyone, they'll hold them there. And when they ring through, they'll give an agreed handover point. So in in that operational plan is a map with all the exits entrances numbered and it's whether it's East, Mayflower West, Mayflower East, whatever. So they can give that detail and share that from that map of where that handover point is, just to try and make it easy. Ninety nine percent sure, you know, this isn't going to happen, but it is in that briefing with the guys, security and everyone else. Should there be a fire in a business or residential property or swast have to get to someone in a residential property. Gain that same information going to them of the best access point, because obviously you are going to have to break fence lines. You can't deny access for an ambulance, for a medical incident or the fire service. There's also the agreed emergency access route. So consideration that with the fence lines. And they might be have to be able to have if you have an emergency. Hopefully, touch and wood, we have, I don't think we've had anything major in the city centre to deal with like that recently. But it's just to have it on the radar of, we can't deny access to any of that. And I'm sure you wouldn't for preserving life. So just just having that plan in the back of your mind of who's going to do what should that happen? But it's it's all listed in that plan. And if anybody needs to speak to me afterwards or drop me an email for any further explanation of it, I'm happy to go through that. I'm going to be on on call on the end of teams of the whole process of this anyway as well. So in there. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. I have, you might think it's extreme, I had it in there about suspect packages and bombs in the process of that. If these people are as determined as you say they are, I'm not saying it would be real, but it's something that they might use to cause disruption of leaving something around. Again, the police of, sorry, the security are very well versed in dealing with this after they have for major events in MTV and such like. So they do know that process and will run that for us before it needs to cause any panic or escalation. But I'm just thinking that's a tactic they may use. Sorry, Phil.
Yeah, so have we managed to have all the buses and coaches for the night?
Pass, not on my radar.
Yeah, the buses, Mayflower Street isn't used by buses at the moment because of the works that are being undertaken. And we believe the coaches coming from the other end.
Brilliant. Okay, thank you.
So my other thing that I've put in the plan here is obviously from a security perspective, the guys have got, who are dealing with all the issues, have got body cams on. They'll have their mobile CCTV, so they'll catch as much information on this should it be needed as well. Their sort of real level of control here is going to end at that CDM line. So if anything that's happening outside or further outside, and I know that was raised about protesters blocking roads and that. That is probably going to become a slow time issue of speaking to the police and how, you know, how they deal with that and get people in. Because security will have no authority to manhandle people off the highway to allow vehicles to move in. So just just be aware of that one. Again, evacuation, hopefully don't need it, but just have in the back of your mind whether where you're going to send people, whether it's going to be the Mayflower Street Car Park, Guildhall Piazza, Coach Station, whatever, just just have a plan in your, you know, in your mind where you're going to tell people and stay there until they tell their come to come back and security will, you know, secure the site until that clears. Like I said, hopefully, none of this will be needed at all, but at least it's there written down. And you've got someone to work to should it happen in the worst case scenario. If anyone's got any other questions at this point or anything, they they've seen in there that they feel inaccurate or wants changed. Either let me know or drop me an email and I'll get the set. My plan is with an hour and a half, there's meeting is to get the second draft of this plan out to everyone so it can be shared.
So I'm going to go by show of hands. Ray, thank you very much. Julian, your hand was up first, then it was Martin, then Dave.
Okay, could I just have somebody, because we did sort of pick up an action there about clarifying the bus and coach arrangements for for the coach station? Could we just have a name to take that forward, please?
Yeah, Martin, you said you, did you say you'd liaise with them and you're fairly certain they're not? Can can we get clarity on that?
Yeah, I think we had spoken with City Bus or the Mayflower Street team. Might be Nick, Nick Carter on the call. I don't know if you had that chat or not, but we can, let's get some clarity on it. Let's get it written. We're going to get some signs also that are going to go at either end of Mayflower Street saying local access only. So we're not closing the road because we don't have the the permit to do it. So access still will be allowed through by the means of the bankman, but we're putting signs up to deter that.
Yeah, I think we do need to get clarification on the the buses or the coaches, Martin. So we'll do that after this meeting.
Yeah.
But currently, the room is not is not open for the buses.
Okay, so action recorded there. Thank you, Julian. Martin?
It was only, yeah, just thinking about who's going to be on site tomorrow night. It'll be me, me and Paul will be in the cabin and everyone else will be at Ballard, as far as I understand. So I guess it will be down to between me and Paul to make the half hour updates to Giles with updates from the Morgan Sindal team and feel whether you're on site as well. I don't know what what your plan is, but I think ultimately those half hour updates will be from me or Paul.
Okay, and given the, are you going to be positioned where Phil at or are now? Just trying to think of all the best.
Will we, we'll be in the cabin there, yeah.
Okay. We will, we'll stretch some meetings with you and Paul. And then what we'll do is keep a continual review of those meetings and then should such time, should we reach the time where we think actually everything's in order now? We can stand down, but for the moment, we'll we'll get them set up. There's an action there for us. Brilliant. Okay, Dave?
Cheers, Dave. Just a quick one, just following on from the point that Martin just made about being on site. We did discuss yesterday, I think, Ray and yourself and I, around having, using library potentially for that kind of forward commands point space. If we're asking for teams invites, because the signal in that cabin is particularly poor. Or think about an alternative way of updating the Tactical Operations Centre?
Yeah.
Where is that cabin? Sorry, I've got to say, I know you're in a cabin. Where are you?
It's on our mark away, the sundial, yeah, by the north of the toilets, the training toilets. Yeah, it seems that the signal is okay, except for in these kind of teams calls, that seems to be the biggest problem. So I think we, I think if we do teams calls, it'll have to be just by an individual's laptop, not using all of the TV and the speakers and whatever, we just do it through a laptop. Then it'll be more reliable.
I mean, ultimately, those meetings could be very quick touch base meetings. So a one on one, if you you and Paul are on site, sat aside by side, you'll coordinate that information into you guys and then just relay. It'll be, you know, you'll have me, Giles, Ellie, Emma. You know, there's going to be a few people there, kind of, you can relay information to at the other end, but for you guys, just make it work for that. Because that communication is incredibly challenging.
It is, yeah, yeah.
Okay, Julian, your hand went back up as well. Was there something more from you?
No, it was only the, it was only, I was just raising the the issue of the comms with the cabin, same as Dave baked it, but we've covered that off.
Okay, superb. So Ray, just one of the other things we didn't talk about in the plan was around the briefing around for nine hundred for CCTV. Is is there any communications planned from yourself, Martin, Paul, Nick to to update them to find out how much coverage they've got on for the evening, just in case something does go wrong? Have they got enough operatives working that evening to cover that and plus any other incident which may occur in the city? Julian?
Well, I had a conversation with Darren earlier this morning. There are two operatives on on CCTV tomorrow night. And I understand the camera that was out has been repaired. That's the one at the north of the area, which now which now has a view down our mark away. Currently, the view is obscured by trees. Which so there may be a better view throughout the evening.
We'll rent a file that quite quickly.
Yeah, the, there is, there is unfortunately, there is no possibility of a feed from the from CCTV through to Ballard House. So the only eyes on will be from in the in CCTV room. I think the police have got access to it, haven't you, James? Have you got secondary access to?
Yeah, we have, but in the in the main response room, but I'm planning to be on the with my team being on site anyway, so.
So so the odd mark one eyeball is going to be there anyway.
Julian, I'll make sure I get the CCTV rooms number and put that in the plan then, because TOC might want to speak to them direct.
Okay, that's great.
Super, very, very conscious of time. I do apologize, everybody who's called in for this meeting. In terms of other actions in your email, Ray, is there anything that we need to pick up on here or do you do you think you've covered that within?
Bear with me, just bear with me one second. It was the weekend and tried to sleep since then, but.
Are we going to stand down Central Library? If so, I'll make that call. Or do we still need access, do you think?
I'm.
Dave, I would stand, I would stand that down. I think I think we might make it more complicated than it's worth. And I think if we've got fullback of mobile phones.
Yeah, so sorry, Dave. Obviously, I spoke to Jane about this yesterday. I think it's really important that we get a sort of comms statement that the staff are briefed with, the security staff. So if they're, you know, cornered by media or protesters and that, everybody is saying the same thing. People aren't left to put their own spin on what they should be telling people. So there is a standing statement for staff that, you know, this is the answer that you give to media or anybody that stops you, you know. It's a it's a message that comes across from everybody. There's no different messages going out on the night if they're if they're stopped. And that can be incorporated in the briefings at the beginning of the night. We've talked about emergencies and talked about that. You're going to sort out who's who's dealing with what on site, Martin. So that's great.
Right, rather than moving on, just going to cover it bit by bit. So Jane, have you got, I've seen you've come off mute. Are you able to comment on that bit?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say, keep it really simple, don't get involved. And for any of the contractors to say, there's a statement on Plymouth City Council's new site about what we're doing and all.
Yeah. I was about to say the same thing. That's what that's what the state, if anyone is asked to the statement on the council website.
Fantastic.
Again, that just needs to be fed into the briefings to everybody. So that's just, you know, across the board.
Brilliant. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut across you, just.
No, 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 no.
Missing it.
As we go through, like I said, emergency and news dealing with, Martin's mentioned that they'll discuss who's going to be dealing with what and sort that out on site. And again, rendezvous points, they'll look at what they're going to do on site there. From from that. We've talked about recording and stuff. I do think it's key with this because I do think probably we're going to get some legal challenges afterwards. So it's just handy to have all that information. Who who decided what, did what at what times and the rationale for it, even if it's just scribbled on the notepad and and dealt with later. And and again, something Giles brought up with me earlier on, you know, accidents and incidents are mentioned in in the plan and we have a normal PCC process of dealing with that. But Giles has asked that the TOC be informed of any immediately should they happen, just so that they're on their radar of of dealing with. And again, the other thing is of when when we release this to others and who those others are. And from my thinking at this point, it is really swast and then some fire and rescue are the two key ones that all need to know about this and have this plan. And I think, Dave, we were talking about how how we best get them out to to them and at what point.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think once you've got that final version, Ray, I will perhaps have a chat with our contacting fire.
Okay.
So, I mean, the one question from me then, is everyone happy that I put, I'm I'm aiming, he says, with the best will in the world. So about three thirty, four o'clock today, I'll have all these amendments that people have sent me. He says with the best will in the world, so about three thirty, four o'clock today, I'll have all these amendments that people have sent me, I'll distribute it to everybody on this list. I'm just going to make sure in the chat I catch your phone number there, James. And um, and I'll share that to everybody. Uh, who's who's on there, and unless anyone comes back, that will be the the final operational plan for this and what we will be working to. On the day.
Right, can I just ask as well, um, I I know you you've covered it in in the plan, but just when when the decision is made, where the briefing and and probably on site, obviously, but. Just make make it clear when everybody is going to be on site, because um, what I want to do is I want to make sure that our guys coincide with everybody, because I don't want to. You know, even two or three police officers going and hanging around in the area is going to draw a necessary attention to it if you're not there, so I just want to make sure that we arrive exactly the same time as you.
Martin, can you update me on that later on, could you drop drop a quick email, just?
Yeah, I'll speak with the, I'll speak with the chaps at Morgan's and.
Brilliant.
Get back to you.
And and I intend to be um, on site as well, just walking around in the area. Um, so I won't be going to a command post, but what, just where is the command post, just so I know if I do need to sort of go and liaise with anyone?
On site or the tactical command?
Well, both.
Uh, tactical's Ballard House, uh, and onsite will be, what, the cabins that by the toilets in New George Street, Martin?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, and we can give you the code as well if you want it, James, to get into the compound if you need to, and then we'll we'll be in the offices upstairs.
Yeah, no, that that's fine, I I've left my number there, so like I said, I intend to sort of outside anyway, so, okay. That's brilliant, thank you.
Superb, right, I I know we've we've jumped around a lot, we've got a few actions that are written down for from this meeting, Ray's made it really clear that he wishes to circulate this plan. Between three and four, so we need to get any any amendments over to him quite quickly. Um, I am conscious of time, consciously agenda items, um, so I'm going to scrap quite a few of them. Um, are there any actions, especially Ray, for yourself at the moment, is there any actions that you feel? Uh, from what you've seen that we need to be discussing prior to the close of this meeting?
No, if if we're following what we've agreed in the meeting today and that's all done, then I think that's, that's on track and as much as we can do, given the, you know. It's the whole thing about the announcement and that, so that's, we're on track other than that, I think, Dave.
Okay, so I think, I think i- is assuming that the plan uh, as as is, is static, so we're not going to move the five o'clock meet, et cetera. Then I think Giles would probably look at a publication at four forty-five or or there or thereabouts maybe, uh, depends what Emma says. Um, so I will take that as an action for me, I'll speak to Giles, try and find out what what advice has been passed around that. Um, and then make sure that's fed back. In terms of, there are still quite a few little moving bits of this, do we want to have a reconvene prior to tomorrow evening? Uh, just to, and try and keep that one to a true half an hour, just to make sure we're happy, I know this feels like we are. Over egging it, um, but it's, I would rather put a bit of effort into this side of it than than to wish uh, wish I had uh, when I'm being called up in front of a review. Um, so uh, uh, go, I think it was a thumbs up, are we happy for a quick half an hour, maybe tomorrow lunchtime or mid morning? Yep, thumbs, I'm going to take a few, superb, okay, all right, so there was another action there. Um, any other actions that we've we've picked out, we will make contact direct on, um, everybody. Uh, has been, it's been really good talking that out today and and kind of getting some rounded views, so. Yep, Phil?
Um, just a quick one, Ray, is it, is it worth, I'm going to be, well, I'm going to be a man in it from. Morgan Sindel's perspective, so you're saying about the guy who's going to liaise with everyone, that's going to be me. Um, do you want me to stay on the line with you for ten fifteen minutes, because there's.
Yeah.
A bit more in depth than I should anything, does it?
Plan B, Plan C, et cetera, just so you're after with it all.
Yeah, absolutely.
Brilliant, okay, then I will, I'll call close to the meeting, we'll reconvene this tomorrow. Um, Julian, Dave, I'll speak to you in a little bit, um, and Ray, um, but everyone else, thank you ever so much for your time. Uh, if anything changes, any new intelligence comes in, anything else like that, please just make us aware and we'll reassess what we've put in place. All right, thank you very much. Cheers, Dave. Cheers.
Uh, Gav, shall I stay in for this bit?
Yeah, yeah, if you could, Martin.
Yeah. So, from from my perspective, Phil, it's just deciding what your structure is on site. Who's, who's the decision maker? Uh, and I would say you probably want that group to include the security manager or director. And so if if Phil, if Phil, if you're representing Morgan Sindel, because obviously it's their site, C D M site. And obviously someone from P C C from a projects team, because it's our project. And someone from security, because obviously they're managing issues on site, and that's what I would call your sort of management team on site, obviously. Some of you are going to be out on site in the evening and and dealing with various things, but I would say that is the group of three decision makers of things happening. And, you know, how and what you're going to do, and again, what I've put in there, Martin, is that at what point you feel. What's happening on site is going to step on an impact of you being able to deliver what you're delivering or reputational risk to Morgan Sindel or P C C. Is that's the draw Giles and that into them and giving them facts and and getting a direction from them, rather than being on your shoulders. From be- becoming what I call almost business as usual with a few problems to, you know, dare I say, a clusterfuck of protesters.
Yeah, no, I'm with you, with you, Ray, I think I'll, it'll be me and me, Paul, taking the advice of Gav. Uh, and others on the site who are dealing with the different component moving parts, you know, ultimately, so I think it'd be reliant on Gav for you speaking to me. And Paul about any problems that are coming up or pro, or what we're doing half hourly, and then we report that back. Because you're right, Ray, I think project side has to be an officer, I would have thought reporting back to Giles.
Yeah.
Being it's a P C C project, so um, yeah, but I'll have to take the.
I I know this is a pain in the ass, because, you know, you guys are there principally to make sure the trees are down and removed and and that operation, but. This is a potential of, you know, what's going to interfere with all of that, so it's it's sort of running this in tandem with letting that get on, but obviously keeping an eye and managing it. Um, yeah, difficult situation. Uh, but again, it's just, it's just, and I would write down somewhere who that group is and this is, and I can't stress enough from, you know. Obviously, my background in events and doing it all of M T S, M T V safety stuff and. My my previous life being construction site manager, so I I empathize and know where you guys are going through as well, because that's the background I come from, it's. It's that crossover of the two, it's really, really difficult, and the only grounds at the moment is the C D M regs that we've got of interfering with business and that, that's going to give. Security the powers to do what they they do. Um, so, you know, and and they they will do what they need to do, once that, so, and the fence line, as we know, is the initial point, is frustrating, I think. That the announcement's going to go out before the fence lines up, that's, that's what I think now is going to be the dangerous hour for you guys. And I think if you get past the first two hours, then you're in with a fighting chance.
Yeah.
Do you want me to give you the heads up what we've squared away already, right?
Yeah, absolutely, if you want me to, if it's in the plan, I'll put it in, shoot away.
Right, so the the ops room is going to be in the site office, so. In in that team's going to be myself, a member from the council, the director of the security team.
Yeah.
So anything that actually happens on site. I reckon pretty much, the way we're going to put the fence up, we're going to put the external skin up first.
Yeah.
We're going to get the triangle sections in the corners, so we can, if it kicks off, we can funnel people down to the corners and then we can deal with. Deal with that with security, so we're gonna, we're gonna bang the ops room, what I have done is on all the vulnerable points, so all the processing areas. We've got two processing areas, everywhere we've got Harris Spencer. We've got three signs going up on the inside skin. And it's going to be the name of the road, now that name of the road is going to be the call sign for each individual area. So, for example, if it goes pear shaped, so put cop form house, someone gets on the net and says, there's loads of protesters turned up. If we haven't got anything to reference it with, no one's going to know where to go, so it's going to be.
So I don't know, have you seen, have you seen a copy of the ops plan yet?
Uh.
No, we haven't seen yours either, Ray.
Well, I was going to say that, if we can, if, I'll make sure, Martin, can we share this?
Yeah, because you've marked on the different numbers.
So what I have done in the ops plan, just to let you know, I have marked, um. All those, all those roads, so I've numbered all the gates from one to seven. And other than the cop form ones, what I've also done is put East Lake, sorry, not East Lake, Mayflower East, Mayflower West. Cornwall, Cornwall Street East, Cornwall Street West, New George Street, so it's done by east and west of each of those streets.
Yeah.
On there and a number, so if you want to take the information from that plan, it just means then, if you have an emergency, the emergency services are working to those numbers in those streets. Uh, and there's not two sort of different numbers and names going on, so people get confused. I haven't done the cop form, so please feel free to do whatever you want up there, but I'll make sure that Martin shares, shares this plan, like I said, I'm just, you know, I've got a few alterations to do. I'll bang them out, I'll probably actually find your email addresses in the chain of. The emails going on, so I'll make sure I send them to you direct as soon as they've gone out, so you've got that.
Yeah, so we've, so we're going to have an ops room, we're going to be liaising with the guys on site. The plan is we get the site set up, we get the security out there with the guys when they're building the fences.
Yeah.
Once the vehicles are actually on the road, they're going to be in a layby up on the A thirty eight, once they're on the road, we're going to brief. The site team, the gatemen, et cetera, they're going to come in from the west. So they can drop the plant off and go out through the east, so we've, we've gone through this plan with them. That's the way the vehicle movements are going to happen. Once they're actually in sight, then we're going to, like you say, we're going to be doing radio checks, we're going to make sure everyone's happy in what they're doing, if there is any problems. They come directly to the ops team and then it will be up to myself and whoever's involved with that to come up with a quick set of Q B Os. You know, so we do a battle, battle plan, we we do a plan and then we we react with it and we get it, get it squared away. Also, we've come up with a plan on site, should we get a breach to the compound, so if we get a breach to the compound and it's down at the bottom. Where the cabins are, we put harden up, segregate that area and we carry on at the top.
Yeah.
Vice versa, if they get in at the top. We segregate that area and we carry on at the bottom.
So the whole operation's not stopped and and you can carry on with part of it at least.
The only way the operation stops is if we have a mass infill of loads of protesters. And then what happens with that, a set of Q B Os on that will be, if if we get a breach of the compound. Every set of security, even the site team, we make our way up to where the tree surgeons are. Uh, even the extended line and we push right through anybody who's there, we get to the, we get everybody in the compound and we deal. So if we get massive breaches, we get up to the top and we secure the area, get all round defence and we come straight down and then we get into the. And then we, we deal with it from there.
Yeah.
And. Actions on vehicles, so we've got a number of vehicles that are coming in. Once we're, we're actually in the trees. We're going to liaise with the drivers and the gatemen, so they'll give a five minute warning when they're going to get to site, we get security down to them areas. When the vehicles are coming in, we open the gates, we get them in, and then we close the gates.
On on a bonus, on a bonus from what I can tell from that meeting, conversations have happened elsewhere at a different level with the police. And now there's going to be a police presence on site as there wasn't going to be. So at least if you get anyone obstructing the highway as you're trying to get into the compound and that, they will deal with that because it's their remit and they're around to deal with it. Um, I was a bit concerned last week when they're saying there's no one there, because that was going to happen slow time, so. Obviously, conversations have happened elsewhere and um, they will be around obviously to assist with that, so that's a bit more comforting to know that.
Just just the last one, right, so Plan C.
Yeah.
Should, should we get to that? If we start having protesters in the road, but we've got all the plant actually inside the compound.
Yeah.
Once the plant's in the compound and we're stopping people getting in. Yeah, we, not necessarily we want protesters, but they're on the outside, fair play. Uh, we're inside, we can find Plan, Plan C, should we not be able to get vehicles out on the road and get any deliveries in? We'll lob all the trees down and we stick them in that compound up at the top and then we process them at a later date.
Yeah.
So if we can't get in and out, because you've got protesters everywhere.
So so again, my thoughts is, God forbid, you know, you need to get an ambulance in or you need to get a fire appliance in, is on the same premise as what you just said. This operation doesn't need to stop, you just need to make sure where they're operating is safe. And and, you know, and again, that's your core, what I'm trying not to do easier, is not interfere with business as usual. What you would normally do for access onto a site for that anyway, so. Uh, it's, it'll mention it in there, but that's your onsite plans of assessing safety and how that would work. Because that's, that's the C D M business of you running the site, not not what I call an operational issue here, so. And again, the only thing, you know, from a fire appliance point of view, they need three point seven metres clear of any overhang, that's what they're um. That they're at, but again, you've you've got gear on site to lift fences out as as needed, so. It, yeah, it's all, it's all good, solid, workable plan.
Yeah, I mean, with, with the actual operation itself, the the. You know, but something's going to have to massively go pear shaped for it not to happen. You know, because once we get the the security up, we get the the compound up, we get the vehicles in, any which way possible. Unless there's a massive kind of, you're getting loads and droves and loads of people getting in there, regardless, those trees will be coming down.
Yeah, uh, just, yeah, this isn't going to affect your operation, but just again, would not surprise me if they don't put a drone in the air to film everything. Just, you know, just, and 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 I don't mean from. Yes, the spin of what you're doing, but they'll be looking for anything that's happening that shouldn't happen safely, you know.
Yeah.
I know you guys would be on top of safety because that's, that's your job, but I just, having done other events they do, they will always be looking for it for an angle, so it's, and there's nothing we can do about drones.
It will be.
While they're sorting that out, Ray. We had, um, there was, there was that chat that there was, it was an exclusion zone, isn't it?
I don't think the police, do you know what, I dropped James an email from the police, because he just, he's just emailed me and said, was there anything that came through about an exclusion zone?
Yeah, I've 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 not seen anything, but the police were discussing about maybe using their own drone, weren't they?
Yeah, I'll I'll ask that question, um, I am a, I'm a little bit more relieved actually, you know, the police are going to have a presence.
Yeah, definitely, I think Dave Ryland had had a bit of a chat with them and I think.
Well, he talked to Giles and Giles had talked to the chief superintendent.
Right, have we put some, have we put some money into it or something?
I don't know and I don't want to know.
No, I, I think we have, I think money talks, doesn't it?
Um, but. I've got to explain to the elections manager why I've done no work on the election for the last four days, but, which Giles was supposed to do and he didn't do, so, but that's, that's my problem, but um.
Yeah.
You know, from what I can tell, you know, all the guys there know where to run a construction site and it's a construction site piece of work they're doing. This, this bit here is just, if it gets away from B A U really. Um, I I, you know, and and the stuff I've put in about bomb threats and that, you know. Yeah, the chances are they're not going to do it, but I wouldn't put, if they are as bad as you say they are, wouldn't put it past them to leave a package there or make a, you know, if they're that determined. But at least, like I said, security are well briefed and trained on how to deal with, you know, these situations and. It won't get to evacuate, it's like, you know, they'd have to pretty much see sticks sticking out of lots of wires, so uh, you know. Just put those processes again, so it can just show that it's been considered what we do and why we're not putting people's, because they'll twist it if it goes to the initial review of. Oh, you put people's lives at risk and stuff like that, so. I'm just hoping that we've done all this and we don't need any of it and it's not an issue, I really do. I mean, it's the, it's the last thing that you guys need. And I'm sure you'll all be glad to see the back of these trees.
Bloody will be, right, this has been going on too long, way too long. It's um. There's some intelligent people in there who've known exactly how to manipulate the council and its processes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, every single time. And then councillors get worried and scared, so, you know.
Quick one, Martin.
Yeah.
Martin, just the last one, you know, if if all goes well, and I think it will do. Is there any chance you can name a road after me?
I would have thought a pub, surely a pub.
Oh, yeah, I'm happy with that, happy days.
I I do gen- I do genuinely think each of these, these trees, these new trees are going to deserve little plaques next to them. With individuals' names.
I mean, from what I can tell, you're you're putting, what, a hundred and twenty nine trees back and six to eight metres tall, so they're not like shrubs, they're.
Hundred and sixty nine going back in, I think, now.
And some of them are over six to eight metres tall, so it's not, you know, reading their things about, oh, it'll take thirty years before they grow, you know, you you're putting size. sizable trees back in and appropriate trees, not like chest, chestnut is not an appropriate tree to be in that area.
Exactly, it's not. Yeah, but I think this is, there's, there's people, there's the view, isn't there, um, Ray of tree equals good, no matter how, no matter what kind of tree it is or if, and um you know, the fact we're cutting them down. But it, this has kind of gone beyond trees now. This is, I think, a degree, this is about an ego thing for the people who organize this.
You know the irony of all this, don't you? Which is a Jane and Ellie problem, is that P C C are hosting the Anglo UK France climate change conference at the, the Crown Plaza at the same time.
Isn't it on Saturday? Isn't it, isn't it Wednesday night?
Uh, Wednesday, I think they might be doing it Tuesday, but Wednesday morning, yeah.
Treatness.
You couldn't, you couldn't write it, could you?
No, it's brilliant. It's brilliant.
So, I mean, if there's anything else that any of you need or consider, either drop me an email or my phone number's in the plan or whatever, give me a call. Like I said, but the plan is now, I'm just going to grab a bit of lunch and then try and get this out by four at the very latest.
Yeah.
So you've, you've got it. And my windows are fine, Phil, thanks. The windows are working fine and, and okay.
Uh, brilliant. Yeah, if you can share, share what you've got as a brief and um Gavin can then sort of uh provide his, his feedback and input back into it as well. So we're all singing from one song.
I'll, I'll do, I'll do it and I'll send it to you guys. I'm sure I've got your emails in the, in the trail and I'll, I'll send it all there. And it's got, like I said, all the actions. You know, lists, contact numbers, everything in there. So, but like I said, hopefully we don't need the bloody thing. It just uh.
It goes smoothly.
Plan the shit out of it and not need it rather than need something and think shit, what we're going to do on the night.
Absolutely. Okay. Follow that over and um Gavin will be back, back in touch.
No problem. Lovely guys. Cheers.
Bye.
Bye.